Alrighty, first of all, I want to say good evening to everyone that's here. We do not have anything to discuss or for the closed session, so at this point I'm going to go ahead and move for the closure of the study session. That is my motion. Is there a second? Any objections? See, no, so move. Alright, at this point I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting, along with the Finance and the Housing Authority. Thank you, Legal Council. Yeah, there's nothing to report from our closed session, so at this point I'd like to open up the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Meeting, along with the Finance and the Housing Authority. Today's March 4th, 2015, the time is 7:10. So at this point, is Pastor Jackson with us today? No, he's... Oh, he is? Okay, thank you. Pastor Jackson, if you could lead us in an invocation followed by the flag salute. So I will ask all those that are able to stand to please do so at this point. Thank you. Good evening.
Father, we come before you right now in the name of the Lord. I said acknowledge you in all of our ways and you would direct our path. Baldwin Park needs your divine direction. From the mayor, the city council, the police department, the school district, the business district, our children, we need your divine direction. We're in some perilous times now, and things are happening all over the world that will affect us right here in Baldwin Park. Well, with your hand upon us, Lord, that we can continue to grow, you can give us wisdom and knowledge and understanding in how to handle every situation that comes before us for the betterment of the city. Touch the police department, keeping them safe as they are out in the streets, keeping the streets safe. Keep our school district where our children, Lord, can go to school and have a lesson and learn and not be fear of gangs or drugs entering into the community. We just need you. We just need your insight and oversight in all that we do, and we ask this in the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this point, we're going to face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I want to say good evening to everyone. First of all, I want to close on behalf of Mr. Luis Corbajal, born on the February the 2nd, 15th of 1922. He is the city treasurer Maria Contreras's father, a 93-year-old individual who has contributed immensely to the community and, of course, seen his daughter elected for many, many years. So our deepest condolences goes out to the Corbajal family. So that's our condolences. Anyone else wishing to close on anyone's behalf?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to close on behalf of Yolanda Hernandez, a longtime resident here in our community. Her father is Rodrigo Hernandez and his wife, Orwellia Hernandez. And she died of cancer, a destructive last month, or December, and just progressively she didn't improve. So her funeral was this past Monday. So just keep her family and herself in prayer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor? Oh, thank you. Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to mention that we heard from Terri Muse this morning.
That's right.
And her mother is very ill, and they are concerned that she will be passing over the next few days, so we just wanted to extend our thoughts and our prayers to the Muse family, and I'm sure that she would appreciate, you know, the warm wishes from anybody in the community at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. At this point, anyone else? Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Yes, Mayor, I don't want to close on anybody, but I definitely want to acknowledge, you know, our city treasurer Maria Contreras's father, so I want to send her our condolences. I want to invite the public to an informational meeting, a meeting where they can give input, as we've always talked. Baldwin Park is park poor, and we don't have a lot of open space. And so we are currently considering Park Plaza across the street from City Hall, and everyone's invited to come and give their input. It will be held at the Julia McNeil Senior Center on Thursday, March 19th, from 10:30 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., so that's a great opportunity for you to come and give us your ideas and your input. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember.
Yes, I'd also like to remind the public that March is Kidney Month, and it's very important for us to do whatever we can for many people that are waiting for a transplant as well as those that are on dialysis. So this is, March is Kidney Month. Also, St. John's is having their annual fashion show this coming Saturday. It's always a lot of fun. It's always a nice theme, and it starts at 6 o'clock at the Parish Hall. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. At this point...
Mayor, I just have one more announcement. I'd like to announce Baldwin Park is having a hiring spree this Thursday, March 12th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Esther Snyder Community Center at Morgan Park. For more information, you can contact Irvine Anaya at the park. Her extension is 481. They're going to have, you can meet with employers. We'll have a number of employers there, computers online to access jobs. So we're asking everyone to bring your resumes. They'll also critique your resume and have interviewing techniques. And also, we'll have their, the American Job Center, the EDD, Gain Division, DPSF. So these are all organizations, government organizations that can help us in the community to reduce the unemployment within our community. Also with that, I just want to also mention that Mayor Potem Cruzbaca and myself and staff met with our new supervisor, Hilda Solis. We met with her and her staff and to discuss the situation that we have with our Workforce Center that was recently closed nearby in Irwindale. And we're going to continue discussions to try to bring more resources for those job seekers here within the city of Baldwin Park. And so we have some follow-up meetings, and we're going to try to unroll a new program out here for those that need jobs within our city, and that's jobs for our youth, for, you know, anyone that wants a job, our seniors. So we're kind of trying to work on that, and I'll give you more information as we go forth. But this is a part of trying to bridge that gap between those that are looking for jobs and our employers. Okay? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
One last thing, if I may. I'm sorry. Well, first of all, I just want to make sure that we acknowledge and commemorate the 50th anniversary of the first march in Selma, which was March 7th. And so I think it's important to note. And I also want to just advise is that the new, I'm trying to remember. Shannon, can you help me out? What is the name of the person that just got hired in Covina?
Andrea Miller.
Andrea Miller, I'm sorry. I was just forgetting her name. She just retired from the COG, and so I want to make sure we send her a congratulatory letter, not only for her years of service with the COG, but also for now being the city manager at Covina. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. One more announcement. On March the 19th, the Baldwin Park Women's Club will be having their annual scholarship dinner. They are inviting all of the council, of course, and all of the residents. The tickets are $25 for the dinner. It's a wonderful dinner that we cook ourselves. And, but it is, all the scholarships go out to our youth. We give out scholarships to seniors graduating from Baldwin Park High School, Sierra Vista, and also from North Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Cruzbaca. At this point, I'm going to have our city clerk, Mr. Avila, conduct the actual roll call. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Susan Rubio?
Present.
Councilmember Ricardo Pacheco?
Present.
Mayor Potem Cruz?
Here.
And Mayor Lozano?
Present. Thank you very much. Alright, so at this point, we do have a presentation, and we have the first one, which is for the proclamation to the L. Hubbard Day. I'm going to have the Vice Mayor read this off, the proclamation. We'll kind of switch over here. So do we have representatives for that? Oh, great, great. Okay, great, good. We're going to go ahead and read out the proclamation. Thank you for being here.
It's for L. Ron Hubbard Day, March the 13th. It's recognized worldwide as the annual celebration of the birth of America and author, philosopher, and humanitarian, L. Ron Hubbard. The life and works of L. Ron Hubbard are encompassing and transcend fields of literature, the arts, philosophy, and religion. His humanitarian influence place him among the most significant Americans of all time as recognized this year by the prestigious Smithsonian Magazine. And his legacy is evidenced by his more than 10,000 authored works and 3,000 taped-recorded lectures, which are now the largest single body of work on the human mind and spirit, with 75 million written and recorded works contributing to improved communities the world over. And his early research and scientific expeditions resulted in his membership in the legendary Explorers Club, and this month is the 75th anniversary of his acceptance as a Life Fellow. And L. Ron Hubbard dedicated his life to helping others. He wants, "I have seen life from the top down and the bottom up. I know how it looks both ways, and I know there is wisdom and that there is hope." Now therefore, Mayor Lozano and Mayor Potem Cruzbaca, Councilmembers Monica Garcia, Ricardo Pacheco, Susan Rubio, city treasurer Maria Contreras, and city clerk Alejandra Avila hereby proclaim March the 13th, 2015, as L. Ron Hubbard Day, and recognize the birthdate and lasting imprint that L. Ron Hubbard left across communities throughout the world to improve lives and help others. And I guess the most famous people that we know that are members of Scientology are Tom Cruise and Priscilla Presley.
Yeah, and I want to also thank the organization, thank them because they've done a phenomenal job, of course, contributing throughout the various communities. I was given a book when I was at Pasadena City College back in the early 80s, and I still have it, so I want to just thank you, and thank you for your presence here today as we present the actual proclamation to you. We'll ask you to come up here. Go ahead, and you could actually say your words from up here if you like. Come up to the dais. Yes, sir. Come on up. I still have my book. Come on, I think he is. The big one is the one over there on Sunset, right?
There's also the really...
Thank you very much. Your pleasure. Thank you. We'll get our picture, then we'll get you on the mic here, okay? Come on in. Hello, how are you? Pleasure, pleasure. Thank you.
Hi.
Let's get our picture here. Come on. Whoa, hold on. Let me get my camera too. Hold on a sec. Hold on, hold on, real quick. Carry on. Make sure I'm in the photo. It's all screwed in. Screwed in.
If you pictures this one first, please. Three, one. Camera.
Alrighty. Okay.
Can I add you to this night camera, please?
Yes, absolutely. Manager, take several. Thank you very much. Go ahead. The mic's yours.
Thank you.
Mayor Lozano, members of city council, is, I want to thank you for the honor of granting this proclamation to Mr. Hubbard in behalf of the L. Ron Hubbard Foundation, which I represent today. I want to tell you that this is very significant to us, very meaningful, that a city like Baldwin Park has, well, is giving this proclamation, recognizing that he worked for humankind and how much he liked to help people. We ask you to accept a book on the work that he did on how to grow plants without chemicals. You see, he was very, very concerned about the environment. So on the 60s, when we experimented this, what they call at that time the Green Revolution, was what's bringing all the fertilizers and chemicals into the fields, it went the other way. And he did a whole study of, now, how can you feed a whole population growing plants not using chemicals? And now, many years later, we found that he was very right, and I would ask the city to accept this book, please.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, let's get a picture of the man. Get a picture of the book. And get a picture of the book. Come on, everybody.
Yeah, let's get this picture.
The book. Come on in, come on in, come on in. Get everyone in.
Yes, Andy.
Take several, Manny. Take several. Take several.
Very good.
Get for my daughter's prom, too.
See that?
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. I think it's got to go. Put this up in the office, sir. For the council members. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much. Nice to have individuals from Sir Hubbard so in this presentation today. Alright, at this point, we are going to go ahead and open up the public communication. Anyone wishing to speak, please state your name. You have approximately five minutes. Good evening.
Good evening. Three minutes. Ken Woods, longtime resident and business owner. I would just like to say, boy, I sure am glad somebody made some phone calls. Elderson looks great. All that crap and all those weeds and all those diapers and all that stuff is gone. The furniture's gone. Those people on the MetroLink, when they look down, as they pull in and pull out, they're going to see the kind of Baldwin Park that we want. And I sure appreciate it. All of them, my business people along the street, appreciate it. And thank you, thank you. Also, I see that on the agenda, the people on the north side of Baldwin Park, I mean, Bedillo, may actually, all of us long, longtime residents, 30, 40, 45, 46 years, may actually get to park in front of their house. And if that happens, we really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Mayor, just really quickly, I just want to say, I want to thank the mayor of Irwindale, Mr. Brusetta, because he was responsible for sending out the crew based on, and Shannon and Cruz also called, and, you know, he was generous enough. He said, "Take care of the street," and so they went out in full force. So let's thank him.
Yes, absolutely. Let's send a letter over to the mayor council of Irwindale. Alright, thank you. Good evening, my friend.
Oh, my name is Phil Correa. I've been living here for about 35 years. I'm here this evening because my mother passed away two weeks, two weeks ago, on February 11th. And we had the service just this past Friday, and we noticed that the city council, Manny, Cruzbaca, you too, Mr. Lozano, send a nice arrangement of flowers. And I'm here on behalf of my mom, my stepdad, Ramon, and my sister and family. I'm here to say thank you. And, you know, we're going to miss my mother. My mother passed away, 96 years old.
Wow.
She lived a long life. She's going to be, she's already cremated, but we're going to send her back where she's going to be in El Morro in Puerto Rico. It's the San Juan, Old San Juan Cemetery. And she's going to be beside one of her dear friends, Jose Ferrer, actor. And so this is, it's, you know, it's going to be really good, where she's going to be next to the ocean and next to a national landmark. But I want to thank you for your condolences and your heartfelt prayers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our condolences.
You got it.
I'm Cindy Ho, over 20 years. Live in Park Shadow Court in Baldwin Park.
Could you speak into the mic, please? Into the mic. Thank you.
I'm Cindy Ho. I live in Baldwin Park for 20, over 20 years, in Park Shadow, next to Morgan Park. And we have a nice neighborhood, and we, there is 264 units within the complex. I'm here to complain about the Zumba fitness class, and they're in front of our complex. Since they moved in in 2012, there is extremely loud music and people shouting and yelling, day and evening. It's disturbing our neighborhood, especially when the bed door is open. Our property manager has sent them notice a couple of times. Some of our residents also talked to the owner and the instructor, just simply required them lower the music level and close the bed door completely during the music on. It would be quiet down for a couple of days when action were taking and bed on after. It's worse during summer, such a small room and crowded people there. We also send complaint to the city. Mr. Mary Darlo from the Code Enforcement told us, "Keep calling the police while the music is too loud and make the police take the further action." It helps a while, and the music level was decreased a little bit. Then it's bed on. Now they know how to trick and avoid the police. The music up and down, the bed door was open and closed. This loud music had been bothering us for three years. It seems no much improved. We are tired of complaining. To me, I have all my windows closed all year long. I brought a noise-canceling headphone, go somewhere when the music is on. The worst part is, when I was sick, I have to stay home. I had become anxiety because of such music at loud and shouting. I hope the city can help us. We have 264 units inside. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Code Enforcement, so let's, I should say, the PD. Can someone follow up with her, please, that we could, and then let the city council know? So we could get her information and her number, so that this way at least we'll respond to her. Thank you for that, and we're going to have someone look into that for you.
Yeah, Leslie Brito, Park Shadows Court, 105. I'm just to complement what Cindy Ho is talking about. We tried to even to make arrangements with whoever is in charge on the businesses. At the beginning, they were kind of afraid, and they tried to set up a meeting, but it never went through. It's very unpleasant, especially on the area, on the 400s. They know how to play games. And my concern is that Cindy Ho and any other of our neighbors are value, as she is, and we would like to have any result about it. We don't know what to do anymore, because our city, the person in charge on the association sent several letters, has been called to the police, and seem like it's not moving forward. We don't know what to do. So I would like to see any support from the city.
Yeah. Alright, thank you, Leslie. Now, we'll get someone on that as well, so that's the one right there in the corner as you're coming out towards Main Boulevard, right? It's a very popular place. Mr. Bear? Yes, who am I speaking with? Me. Oh, Chief. Yes, how about that, Chief? If I might direct them to the back, to Lieutenant Staley, who's in the back. If you'd contact her and give her your information, we'll be in contact with you. Okay? Alright, thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Chief. Alright, thank you. Hey, there's Thomas Carey. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I was at the hearing a week ago.
Yeah, and I'll be talking about that after.
I mean, it performed very well. I didn't, Hook was the one that was nervous. As you were sweating in his blog. Well, anybody with a bald head looks like they're sweating. Anybody, you know. I'm not singling him out. I'm just saying, the light makes it look like you're sweating when you're not.
I hear you.
I'm not being personal. I'm not trying to be. I'm just, but yeah, Thomas Carey, a former resident here, might tend to move back. But I didn't know what to expect at the hearing, you know, but I watched what was going on, and he basically pulled him a Marlin, trying to tell the magistrate three different ways the same thing, till he finally ticked him off, and he said, "We need to move on." So he hung himself. I was happy about that. Because this guy, I don't know what it is exactly, but I know he's greedy. He talks about others like Manuel Carrillo and others being greedy, and he calls people names and belittles others. He really, he's just a bully. He uses that degree for the wrong reasons. He's vindictive, and I just feel that the youth should be kept away from something like that. That is not a positive role model. They need a role model. Cruzbaca, Susan Rubio, the school teacher, finance director, anybody but him. This is not a positive role model, and I wish he was here so I could tell him in person. I am not, he talks about seeing in that blog that he's for the people's rights. Well, while he's suing the city, as he does, the city needs to give him those documents and put that to bed for good. He says, you know, the city attorneys, you know, it's costing money because he's got to fight these things, because he keeps bringing it, and he gets $38,000. That isn't enough for him. He tries to get double and triple of that amount. So who's he helping exactly? He isn't helping these people here, because he's taking the money from the very programs that that $38,000 would go a long way toward scholarships and things of this type. This stuff needs to stop. This litigation and suing then, $38,000 wasn't enough for him. He went after it, and he tried to get $10,000 more. And the magistrate, well, he saw what he was doing, and so, you know, I just, I just don't understand this person's thinking. And he writes on that thing, and he's back to Royal Coaches now, and he's, you know, after the thing in LA. He wants everybody's attention, and he's got me wondering about things, and you should never get me wondering about anything. So he's, he's just not, I don't know. It seems like there's something wrong.
Excuse me, Mr. Thomas, your time's up.
Thank, thank you. Alright, thank you very much, Thomas. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you for being there.
Good evening. My name's May Chauvin, and I'm also with the Park Shadows Condominium Association. I'm the board president. And I just want to reiterate what my two fellow homeowners have said about the Zumba studio that's in back of our complex. The music is quite loud. We have written three letters to them, like every year since it's opened. And in case the city council doesn't know, in order to open a Zumba studio, you have to be a licensed instructor. And we have called, and the numbers that are on the door, I should say that were on the door, now they're gone. And there, no one answers the phone calls. So we are not certain if the people that are conducting these classes are licensed Zumba instructors. And so we are asking the city to help us in lowering the music, at least. They can keep the Zumba studio going, but the music is annoying to the fellow homeowners in Park Shadows. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm going along with public communication.
John Rios, resident. I want to talk about Walnut Creek. I have to agree with Garcia, what she said in the last meeting, you know, that building is deteriorating and the plants and the water system and everything. I've been after the city for the past six, seven years about it. You know, that's when VJ was here, Mike Salas was in the mains department, and I think Manny Carrillo was involved in that, too. You know, one of the things, you don't water something, it's going to die. And I've been after this for the past, I would say, seven years, you know. But what she brought up about the building falling apart, it is. And we're trying to put a grant together so they can fix it up and everything, but they're going to start from the bottom, from the outside first, except the building. I think the building should be the priority number one, for one thing, because it is falling apart, you know. We have the resources and everything. We just need to keep it up. The way I used to tell VJ. VJ's biggest thing was, oh, why don't you get the community to go over there and fix it? That's why we're paying taxes for the city to be doing those things, you know. things, you know. And like I said, you know, I gotta have to agree with, uh, Mr. Garcia about it because it is getting bad. It's getting worse by the day. You know. Thank God there, we're not getting too many graffiti's right there and everything. That part, I, I know all the whole neighborhood, all the little hoods and everything. And I tell them, you guys better not tag it. They might come up from the outside and tag it, you know. That's why I brought those two spray cans that I got at the swap meet for $5, you know, they can go anyplace, you know. But my main thing is that we need to keep up the park. The flowers are there, the trees are there. You know, let's look at taking care of the building first. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Moving along with public communication.
Good evening. Uh, Dan Kalen, 47-year resident of Baldwin Park, 13811 Kenmore Avenue. Uh, time to get old Hannah on the, on the stick here to do some weed abatement there on that property he has. Uh, I guess that'd be northwest of Baldwin Park Boulevard on Kenmore. Weeds are getting pretty high. And in the past, I don't know whether you guys contract with the county to do the weed abatement or whether the city does it. I know it goes on his taxes because he's complained to me about it. And I've, I've called him and I've left messages. So, you know, it's, uh, it's up to you guys to get on him. Once again, Jared Hannah, leader of the Hannah Family Trust, weed abatement. Thanks.
Thank you. We could, uh, give the information to our lieutenant, uh, Staley in the back, who will follow up on that and, and make sure the city council also return, uh, gets information about it. Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Phil Sanquino. And, um, I just hear, uh, go back when Central Park was open. I was there for the reopening, for the opening of it, you know. And, um, I seen a fall in the basketball courts where they, uh, they didn't put the basketball court lower and right, it sunk on one side. And I talked to the guy before the opening, a guy, uh, the crew that was doing, they said they were gonna fix it, but this don't say nothing because Ralph is coming and it's gonna be, you know, tomorrow. I said, okay, I won't. But you guys are gonna fix it, right? He said, yeah. Okay. They never fixed it. And it slants.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
It slants. You look at it, see, wherever it's standing, you can't see it slant. If you go on the other side and look at that court, it's not like that. And they opened it. They opened the park that way. I showed him beforehand, about a week beforehand, that that court is slanting. He says, well, we'll fix it, but this don't say anything. We'll fix it after the reopen. And the guys that work here, the construction people work, work that court, they never did fix it. You can see it yourself if you stand, going through the park, coming from the park this way, not, not from the bill, but this way, you get the corner, go to the side, you can see it.
All righty.
All right. Play basketball, you gotta go uphill, play basketball? Nah, I don't think so. I mean, they should fix it. That park opened up a long time ago. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll have Mr. Manny Carrillo follow up on that. Could you please, and let us know the status. All right. Move along with public communication.
My name is Amanda Serrato, 51-year resident of Baldwin Park. I was here last meeting and was one of several people that complained about unsightly areas in our city. Apparently it's a big concern for a lot of people because for each one of us that stood up and spoke about it, we represent a, a large number of people. Um, a suggestion was made that maybe I could call when I see something that needs to be fixed. But that would not make sense because in my area, within the, um, area from Baldwin Park Boulevard, from Calais to Olive, then up La Rica and right on Nubia and back on Baldwin Park Boulevard and then home, there are many instances where there is graffiti, where there are yards that are not kept up, not only not kept up, but trashy, um, including the passage from Calais onto Baldwin Park Boulevard. My question is, what's the consequence for people, property owners, that do not keep the city side of their property up? Is there something? Or what is the city going to do about it since it is kinda growing?
Go ahead now. Once you finish, I'll go.
I'm saying the problem seems to be growing for, there were four people last week and the only one that got taken care of was Mr. Woods. And that's great, but there were several of us and they were from different areas. So that means that there is a serious problem in Baldwin Park. So what is being done about it?
Okay. What we'll do is I'll refer it over to code enforcement to find out and we'll definitely follow up and let this, let the city council know the status. Make sure that we get the address to Lieutenant Staley in the back.
But it's, that's not my question about my area only. I'm talking about it being what's widespread.
Oh, throughout the community.
Is there some situation, something that is being done?
Yeah, yes, there is. Code enforcement is actively out there. However, there is a lot of places that I myself have seen that need to be addressed. So I think what we probably also need to do is maybe, uh, provide a, a study session where we're addressing this because we did have a not-site organization that was also assisting us. So I wanna make sure that we haven't fallen back, uh, because we've taken it on ourselves as opposed to having this outside company that was also, um, uh, participating in, in looking at some of these areas that were blighted throughout Baldwin Park.
Right. Good.
We'll invite you, we'll invite you when we have that study session.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
We have to make Baldwin Park beautiful, right?
Yes, that is correct. That's, that's definitely always a goal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty. Move along. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Tuttle.
Uh, good evening. Greg Tuttle, business owner. Um, mayor, I, I kinda think that, um, the staff deserves a lot more credit than you gave them at the last meeting. Being as, I couldn't get up and speak. I just didn't feel like it and you thanked me for that. But, um, the, uh, the, the problem is, well, not a problem.
Okay.
But we need to acknowledge these people when they do good. And Mr. Graves over here did a fantastic job with his staff, but it's not just his staff and Mr. Graves. It's Cruz Baca, Susan Rubio, that, and Maria Contreras, that headed up an audit committee. And it was to keep the city in line, keep a budget going. It wasn't this VJ fire everybody and have $6 million in the bank. It was a matter of giving people raises, getting people back to work, giving more jobs out and making it function. And you didn't acknowledge that. And I think you need to do that because these people need to be recognized that they did a good job. They made it work with what we had and the same revenue. And one person that's underrated, and she needs to get a big bonus out of this. If you read the, um, revenues coming in, the planning department under Amy and Mark, I won't forget you, Mark, come in here. Um, planning check fees, 92% up. Building check fees, 58% up. Construction permits, 81%. That's a lot of work that they had to do to bring up the revenue. And, you know, nobody gets recognition for that. It's like, oh, well, we saved some money. We put $6 million in the budget. Okay, that's not the point. The point is these people worked their butts off to do it. You didn't give them the recognition. And the council people that worked in this and the people behind the scenes, uh, Marguerite Vargas was in on an audit committee meeting. I've been on the audit committee meetings. I haven't seen anybody up there other than Cruz and Susan and Maria at these audit committees. You guys need to get educated what we're doing and what's going on with the city. You don't care. I feel. And you need to understand why we had a budget problem, why you thought we had to go sheriff. And then we bring in a new audit firm and golly, Esquez was doing a bad job. And they weren't reporting what should have been reported to the council to let them know that you've been screwing up for over 20 years. So to me, this needs to be addressed. You people need to get educated by coming to these audit committee meetings and understanding where we're at and what we need to do. Um, so I would like to thank, um, everybody that was on the staff of the doing the budget, that they did a fantastic job. We're below what we should be at this time. And hopefully we'll even be below when it comes fiscal year. And we're gonna have a fiscal budget come in June. So we're not waiting two years for a fiscal budget. So.
All right, Mr. Tuttle, your time's up.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tuttle. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. All right. Move along with public communication. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, at this point, seeing no further interest, I now declare the public communication closed.
Mayor, can I make a statement real quickly?
Yes.
I wanna thank Mr. Tuttle for, for being there at all those audit committees and, uh, you know, all the residents that were there. But, you know, I just need to clarify, uh, the mayor and council member Pacheco and Garcia were not able to go because it's an audit committee and we can only have two council members or else it's a violation of the Brown Act. So it wasn't intentional. It's just the way the system is set up. But, you know, we really appreciate your statements and your, and thanking the staff because they did work really, really hard. Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
Uh, thank, thank you. Thank you very much for that statement, uh, council member Susan Rubio. All right. So at this, this point, I will go into the consent calendar, council members wishing to pull any items. We have one. Oh, yeah, legal counsel needs to mention something. Yes, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend for item number 12 on the consent calendar that there are some legal issues that still need to be worked out, some modifications related to that ENA. And so I would, um, indicate that in case anyone wanted to pull it for the 18th.
All right. You know, before I forget, let me just go, uh, just mention something real quick before we go on, uh, referencing the restraining order that I had, um, uh, taken upon with Mr. Paul Cook. Uh, went to court two times, uh, this past Monday at 8:30. We were in the courthouse and prior to the actual, prior to the actual hearing itself, uh, the, um, the bill had handed both Paul Cook and I, um, two pages each, uh, indicating, with the tentative ruling of the actual case itself. And it was evident and very clear, uh, that Mr. Paul Cook, we were required to turn in a five-page report mitigating, uh, whether the TRO was, the restraint order was used maliciously. Um, we turned in five pages. He turned in 129 pages, of which none of the 129 pages address the actual mitigating circumstances referring to the actual restraint order that I had originally requested. And of course, it was not granted. Yet the judge made it very clear to him that if he continued his, um, harassment, uh, towards me directly, then it would elevate, uh, the actual, uh, an actual restraint being placed against him. So I just wanna let the audience know. And I could have chosen to have the city itself, uh, paid for the actual, uh, costs of going to court. Um, however, I decided that I would pick up the tab in its entirety. Uh, so Mr. Cook, who came on here threatening me, harassing me, stalking me at the places I eat, the concerts and what have you, uh, hopefully this sends a very, um, clear message to him, uh, that I or no council member or all the individuals that were personally attacked here do not deserve that. And that you need to stand up to bullies that come in here, uh, trying to threaten us based on the fact that he may be an attorney. Uh, if I were him, I probably would seek my money back in full, whatever school he went to. Uh, he obviously failed. It was made evident. Uh, one thing that I think was very comical at the end of the actual court itself, uh, after the judge made it clear that it didn't look like it was going to be in his favor, he asked the judge, do you think I could submit some paperwork tomorrow? And he was told very clearly, no, the case is over. And I was jumping with joy. Wednesday, when, by, through the mail, I received a letter, uh, from the Superior Court indicating that, you know what, there, there was no findings on his behalf and that me as a defendant was cleared of any false allegations. So that ends that. So I just wanna make that clear to the general audience. All right. So at this point, let's go back, uh, to the actual, oh, before I forget, Thomas Carey was my biggest fan there. Thomas, thank you for being there. I thought some of my other colleagues were gonna show up, but that's the person that showed up. Thank you very much, uh, for being there. I think it was interesting when the other individual thought you were gonna speak on his behalf and liked what you did. Good job. Thank you very much. All right. Okay. So at this point, let's go back to the actual, um, consent calendar items one through, uh, 12. Did you already put in the?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, for legal reasons, uh, number 12 should be pulled and, uh, be brought back on the 18th. But, uh, council member would need to do that.
Okay, I'll make them, uh, well, first of all, council members wishing to pull any items?
Number seven, please.
Okay, number seven. Any others? All right. So at this point, I'll move a motion with the exception of number seven, and I will pull item number 12. That is my motion. Is there's, hello?
Oh, you're gonna, you're pulling 12 to?
I'll second.
Yes, we're gonna pull that out for another meeting. Uh, so there was a second by Vice Mayor, uh, Cruz Baca. Any objections? See none, so move. All right. We'll go over to item number seven, which is, uh, approve an agreement with Consolidated Edison Solution Inc. to conduct an energy audit. This is by, uh, council member Susan Rubio's requesting. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a concern a little bit about the language and an item of this magnitude. I kinda wish we, we had a closed session about it where they can present to us the, um, the future costs. So for example, um, I think it's a great idea that we're doing the audit, but in this agreement, it says no fiscal impact. However, it does state that this agreement does require that we, in good faith, create a separate contract to award the contract if, you know, if they decide, you know, that there is deficiencies that we need to fix. So I have a little bit of a problem with that. Um, I, can we bring it back at a study session where we can ask questions and really know what the cost will be in the future?
Mm-hmm. And also, um, um, excuse me, on the alternatives, it does say the city could choose not to go with the audit at this time. On the alternatives part?
Uh, Mayor.
Yes, council member.
If, uh, if staff could kind of explain those, those, uh, issues, this is a no-cost item that, um, no cost to the city. And I think that, uh, if there's some explanation to the questions that, uh, may be asked here. And also, I think we have some, one of the representatives here that could also explain.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yes, while this is a, a no-cost, um, a no-cost audit, uh, there is the language for, uh, good faith effort, which would mean that we wouldn't just dismiss out of hand whatever is there. I, I did have the city attorney review this, though. We did include some language in this that ensures that we have no obligation to, uh, to enter into any future agreement with this company after we perceive the audit.
Well, can you give us a little more background on what this audit does so that?
Sure. What, what this audit does is it looks at, it looks at, um, all of our energy usage. So whether that's, uh, building lighting, heating, air conditioning, um, insulation, the, the, the whole gamut, including solar, um, some swimming pool, uh, mechanical equipment changes. They'll provide a, a list of potential savings and a cost for investing in new equipment to, to realize those savings. And the purpose behind this investment grade audit is to provide us with a, a tool to be able to pay for new equipment, to improve the equipment out of the future savings.
Now, I have a question. When you said the swimming pool and so forth, isn't that what the Berkshire Group is doing with Honeywell now?
That is the, that is, Berkshire Group, uh, negotiated a new contract with Honeywell that reduced Honeywell's maintenance cost for air handling equipment throughout the city. Um, what this group would do would actually look at the pool pumps, um, maybe a pool cover, a chemical cover, that type of thing, to see if there were any savings opportunities there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further questions, council member Susan Rubio?
And I understand that and it sounds clear, but I have been at other presentations. We were exploring another company in which I was, you know, I sat through a whole presentation and it was very clear, you know, where the savings were gonna be, the cost over time, where we're gonna get paid from. And, and all this right now, I don't have that information. So I would personally prefer to see the big picture before we engage in the process.
Uh, Mayor, if I may, this, and this was the same committee you and I were on, and I think you, there were some meetings that, that you, you didn't make. This is an improvement over the last, uh, I think it was Siemens that came. And it's, it's better because Siemens was gonna have, there was gonna be cost to, to that part of the contract. Uh, this is a more. This is a more in-depth study that we're, that we're gonna be provided for, and it's at no cost, you know, to the city. And, I'm sorry, if you could kind of fill that in.
Yeah, well, if, if I may, there is a line on section 2.2, and it says that the PEA and IGA, which this agreement is the IGA, are both free and create no obligations for the city whatsoever. And that line was placed in there by our city attorney to ensure that there was absolutely no obligation on the city to proceed with this.
What I would like to do is, is before we start, is to have a, bring back the committee, Susan and I, to sit down with Con Edison and go over what work is gonna be done and to assure that it's not gonna be any cost to the city. Would that be sufficient, councilmember?
Well, we can do that, but, but once again, and I understand what you're talking about the language, and it's very clear that we have no obligation. So, my question to you is, then why do we have this line here that says this agreement does require that in the future we negotiate in good faith a separate contract? So, a word does require, to me, implies that it's required. So, that's the issue I'm having with this language.
Do you want to answer that?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that. I--
Well, okay, so, in, in the discussions that we had was, if we were going to continue with the work, we would then negotiate. That would have to be brought back as to whether or not the city council would pay for those services that would continue based on savings that, that they would have, and grants that, you know, that they would have.
But I'd like to see a presentation, if possible. I didn't, I know that, I know that you and Susan belonged to the committee when you went to see, when you saw the Siemens, but I did attend a meeting with someone else in regards to some energy savings. But I'd like to see a presentation to see what exactly they're going to be doing and make sure that we're not cross-referencing whatever's been going on.
Would you, would you like me to set up a study session for the council with a presentation from the consultant?
I, I'd like to say something. On the, on the ad hoc committee, was it just basically Siemens and this company that were--
It was first Siemens, and then later on, we had Con Edison.
And were there any others?
No, there was, there wasn't any others.
Just those two that expressed interest?
Yeah, because this was at no cost, you know, no cost to the city, we thought, hey, you know, what's better than free?
I, I think, I mean, if it's at no cost, there's no commitment there, I, I mean, I think that the language requiring for another negotiation makes sense because it's not like one continuous, so we're not gonna agree to this document, and then it's gonna be like a continuous, you know, kind of negotiation. It would be a separate negotiation, it sounds like, a different--
Right, right, it would be.
So, I mean, if there's no, if, if there's no commitment on the city's part, and it's free, and Siemens is the kind of contender, and they are proposing something that has an expense to it for an audit, I'd be willing to, you know, just move forward with what's, what's free, what's free to the city, as long as we don't have any commitment, and the city attorney can speak to that.
Yes, table counsel.
Thank you, councilmember Garcia. In the contract, Article 5, Contract Price 5.1, it says, "While it is the, it is the city's good faith intention to negotiate a separate contract with Con Edison Solutions, this is not an obligation to actually enter into a contract with Con Ed Solutions to implement the measure proposed in the IGA report." So, I think that language is clear, but because there's some confusion, I don't think it's a bad idea to bring this back and make sure that we're clear on it, so.
Okay, can we have the representative from Con Edison, maybe you could shed some light on this?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and city staff. Michael Chapin here with Con Energy and affiliate of Con Edison Solutions. First off, thank you for, for having us this opportunity here to work with the city. We've worked with dozens of cities here in the community, more recently, just a few months back here with the City of South El Monte, working out with some of their renewable energy needs. Just to, really quickly, I guess, just to mention, so, councilmember Baca had mentioned, can we see something better, can we see something more of a study session? And that's what this opportunity that we've worked out with staff is, is a no-obligation opportunity to give you a, a very good interpretation of what the city's energy needs are and the savings potential is. What would be, what we'd be asking of, of your staff, of Mr. Wall and his, and his staff, is a facilities building list, things like you mentioned, the pool, the variable pumps, we'll be looking at the lighting. This involves us spending, actually, quite a bit of time and money with our engineers, our onsite staff, and the reports. And you'll find that the IGA investment grade audit reports that are typically delivered to cities, as you've heard, this is something that usually comes at a cost to most cities. A few years back, as with another city, even up in the Imperial Valley, where the city council had to debate whether to accept the offer from the energy company because it came with a contingency that if they didn't move forward with the measures, they would have to pay a fee for that report. In this case, we've eliminated all the obligation. What we'd like to do is be given the opportunity to go through, find the measures, work it through with staff, and bring you a presentation that goes through and says, "We've, we've analyzed your lighting bills, we've looked at your energy bills, we've calculated the savings, and here are some good ideas about how we can save you money." And at the end of the day, if those negotiations fail, there's no obligation for the city to move forward. But it, it gives you two things. It gives you a very good look at the savings picture that the city has and the potential that's there, and also gives you, as you mentioned, a competitive view to maybe something that you have with Siemens or any of the other companies. It gives you a nice comparison look. So, this is an opportunity at no cost for us to give you that good staff report that we're hoping you'll enjoy and see. It's gonna take anywhere between 90 to 120 days for us to complete our work that's in here. Again, that's our field analysis, our engineers that are gonna come onsite and do this work at no cost for the city. So, this is the opportunity we hope the city will be able to take advantage of, and we're looking forward to working with you on that. So, if there's any questions, I'm happy to--
Yes, I do. How much of our, our staff time will you need?
Essentially, we'll, not so much, the only things we'll need specifically are copies of the billings. Typically, that can even come as far as a release from the city saying, "We give you access to our energy bills." And then we'll probably have a total of maybe two to three days onsite with our engineers saying, "We need access to, look at your meters, maybe your roof, your, your pumps." So, it'd be a few hours over the course of a few days. Then we take that data analysis back, and we analyze, and we create the reports needed to make the presentation. But, it's not comprehensive, and we'll work around the city staff's time and coordinate that, and that's what will be required.
Mayor, I would suggest that if we could move forward with this request, and then just have a, you know, before we start, we could have a, go, go back with the council and talk about the work you're gonna do.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you. So, at this point, are you making a motion?
That's a motion.
By the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, any objections?
Yes.
One objection, okay, at this point, I'm gonna ask, Alejandro, I would like to please take roll call. So, there's a motion by councilmember Ricardo Pacheco, seconded by councilmember Monica Garcia, and there was one objection by the vice mayor. So, at this point, we're, go ahead and request roll call.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes, the motion passes 3-2. All right, thank you very much. At this point, we're going to go ahead and--
Mayor, if I may ask, just real quickly, and the reason I have to state this is that next time, I'd rather that the staff report reflect the actual contract. When the report says one thing, and the contract says something else, you know, it just gives, you know, the opportunity for misinterpretation, and, and that's, that was my issue with this, that it clearly states it's required on one paper and something else in a different paper. So, I needed that clarification to be satisfied. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, at this point, we'll go over to the public hearing that we have, the, a request for consideration of mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact and specific plan amendment to specify Plan 06-01 for the development of a 51-unit, single-family, detached gate condominium project, including the relocation of two wireless communication facilities with the, with the R1, single-family residential, and MU2, mixed-use zones. Additionally, the project includes a request for a zone change to apply the specific plan overlay to Assessor's Parcel Number 8552-017-004. A related request is for a tentative track, track map to consolidate 12 lots or residential portions thereof into the one lot of land for a 51-dwelling unit residential condominium subdivision and one lot of, of land for a wireless communication facility within the same zoning destination. Location, southwest corner of Ballpark Boulevard and Merced Avenue. Location, Assessor's Parcel Number 8552-017-004, 8552-017-068, and so on. Applicant KLL Investments LLC, Case Number Z554. So, at this point, I will open it up, actually, let me go ahead and open up the public hearing. So, I will take those that are, want to speak in favor of the project, they could come up here. This is the time for you to come up and speak. As regarding the 51-unit proposed condominiums on the Coran on Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council-- You know what, let me do this, you could come up after, because the developers are gonna do their presentation. So, this is for the public here, and then we'll have you come up here. Okay? Yes. All right, so at this point, seeing no one that wants to speak in favor, anyone that wants to speak opposing the project? Okay, here comes Thomas Carey.
I just wanted, hey, these people like, these people like do these projects, would they like this type of thing next door to where they live?
True.
Down there, I don't, they, they build all this high-density stuff, and I've seen it other places, and the traffic is horrendous. That's a bad corner for that. I wonder if those people like that train noise, that they'll be entertained by that. I know I wouldn't want to live by something like that. I won't live by something like that, I'd rather live by the freeway, at least the sound is constant. But I, I have difficulty getting my arms around high-density projects. Lindora has a bunch of them up there on Route 66, or Alosta, I don't know what they call, for sure what, I think it's Route 66, and there's just multi-story buildings, there's four or five of them there. I don't know where all those people are gonna park up there. So, where, I'll get back there. I can hear you, if I can hear you, you're speaking too loud because my hearing is bad.
Okay, excuse me, all right, go ahead, go ahead.
These people, they want to build these things, why don't they build them in their own damn neighborhood? And have all that high density there? We don't need that here. You see what happens when the train is in that station, it was backed up today down beyond Ramona. We got enough traffic here, or you guys do, coming off that freeway. Freeway, something's wrong, where do they come? They pour into Baldwin Park. Do we really, I, I know the city needs tax money, I know that's part of it, but, and this Rome project, too, do you really need to build that right here? I, I just don't understand why all this cram everything together, that's what I'm saying. You cramming all this stuff into a small space, and it doesn't turn out well, it looks great on paper, but, I, I just don't see it. Maybe I'm old-fashioned that way. I mean, where are the, where are the families, where are the people gonna play? There's no room to do that. They want the kids to get out and do things, but there's no room, it's all jammed together. And we still don't know what the long-term effects are of those cell towers and the, the electromagnetic fields and things like that. I wouldn't want to live next door to something like that. There's a piece of property over on the west side of Baldwin Park, under the high-tension wires, for sale right now on a street called Pleasance or something like that.
Essentia, yeah.
Yeah. Who, who in their right mind is gonna live under those, those wires are huge up there? And there's a property for sale, you're gonna build a house there? Not knowing, you know, what the effects are gonna be? It's the same with the cell towers, they're micro--
Excuse me, Mr. Thomas.
Radiation or whatever they call it.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Okay. Send them packing.
Got it. All right, so at this point, this is the public hearing for those wishing to speak opposing the project. Okay, seeing no further interest, yes, yes, sir. Good evening.
Dan Kalman, 13811 Kenmore. Okay, I've been handed a revised lot plan here, and as you recall, last, last time we talked about this development, I was concerned about the three-story detached condos adjacent to my lot. When the original plan was put forth at the, I, I don't know what it was, it's on the third floor anyway, at that little get-together, it was stated at that time that all the condos adjacent to existing neighborhoods would be two-story. Well, that was except for my lot, which they're gonna be three-story, but they, they did make, make an adjustment, and one of the condos is going to be two-story, but there still remains three that will be three-story next to me. And I'm, and I'm just kinda curious of why they didn't go ahead and make the other three that, you know, could have been, I guess there's money involved, but I really don't see why they couldn't have made those two-story also. It's, you're still, it's a privacy issue. So, that's, that's my question.
All right. Okay, we'll be asking questions once we bring the developers up here. All right, thank you, move on, public communication, public hearing. Seeing no further interest, I now declare the public hearing closed. Oh, this gentleman, yes.
I come up, that's my buddy next door, we live next door to each other on Kenmore. I just wanna say that I still think it should be single-family dwellings instead of condos. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that, sir. All right, any others wishing to speak on the public hearing? If not, at this point, I will now declare the public hearing closed. So, at this point, Amy, and then we'll have the developers also come up. So, Amy will give us the background. So, I guess we're gonna place it on the actual screen here, am I correct?
Amy, or Mayor, if I could, real quick, before Amy starts, a lot of good questions were asked at the last meeting, and I just wanted to real quickly answer some of those. One of them was about the fire department. They have and will approve the layout of, of the plans and of the street. The buildings are fully fire sprinkled inside for safety, which is a new code requirement. The project will meet all of the most recent safety codes for fire and emergency escape. The interior streets are gated, and they are private streets, so there will be a homeowners' association that will have full authority to enforce any parking or speeding regulations within these private streets. The gate to Kenmore, Kenmore is only a crash gate for fire department, emergency only. There will be no access for pedestrians or vehicles. Therefore, people would be highly discouraged from parking there because they would have to walk all the way around the block to Merced to get into the project. If there were to become an issue with parking, for whatever reason, the city at no cost to the residents could post parking restrictions for the residents. The city, was asked if the city will receive any revenue from the project. The city will receive about $800,000 in park fees, building permit and plan check fees, about a $380,000, approximately $140,000 in other development impact fees. The school district also will see, receive funding in amount of $380,000, and the city will see an annual property tax increase of over $7,000 a year. And then, in addition to that, there could be economic spin-off from the new development with the residents, eating, shopping, buying gas, et cetera, in Baldwin Park. So, I just wanted to address some of those issues and then turn it over to Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you, CEO. Thank you very much for that information. At this point, the Honorable and the Distinguished Amy Harbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be really quick, because we've all seen this. The summary, in summary, the project proposal, as you can tell, is located at the southwest corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Merced. The total project area is about 3.6 acres, it's flat, and structures are slated for demolition in the near future. As of yesterday, at about 4:15, the late afternoon, we were provided with an updated site plan as a result of ongoing studies that the developer was doing, and I provided you each a copy of the little eight-and-a-half-by-11 color map. And what, after the last meeting and consultation with the developer, what the developer did was there were two actual lots down here, close to Kenmore, adjacent to Mr. Calhan's lot, and what the developer did is they took two lots and combined them into one lot. So, you're looking at a net reduction of one lot, number one, and then also what they did is they put a two-story dwelling unit here, and then also, it's set back, the rear yard setback is like 25, 20 to 25-plus feet. So, the reduction of the impact on Mr. Calhan's property is significantly less than it was before, given that his house is right here. than it was before, given that his house is right here. Lots numbers, you might see a little 2 on the map, it's kind of hard to see on this, but that 2 signifies that that unit is a two-story unit. If it doesn't have a 2, it's a three-story unit. The two-story units are primarily, excuse me, there's one here at the corner, the three to the north, all the way around the residential area, and then you have three-story units all along Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard, and then along the interior of the property as well. So, as I said, we did work with the developer as much as possible in order to reduce the impacts, and then also, one of the one final things that they're also proposing is rear yard landscaping for those lots around in this area, that would also include screening and reduce the impact on the neighboring single-family residences as well. So with that, I'm not going to read the resolution or the ordinances or anything, and I'll let the developer come up.
Yes, go ahead, let's bring the developers up, thank you.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, Jim Powers with Mega Five Partners, and we would like to just thank the council members for their time and energy, and especially staff, and that we're available. If you have any additional questions, we're more than happy to answer those. And we'd like to thank you again for hearing this development project tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so at this point, councilmembers have any questions?
No, I would just like to comment and thank Mr. Powers. I met with them several times with my concerns, and they were very accommodative, they did answer all the questions, and they did make some significant changes. So, thank you very much.
Let me ask a question, the concern came up about the actual three-story homes that would be hovering over to the neighbor, the question I was trying, so is it, do you come up to the lectern, please? So that, there's one house that will be a one-story or two-story, or...
Two-story. Right adjacent to his property. He's got a pretty wide driveway. His house sits on the western side of his lot, and then he's got a pretty wide driveway, and he has a motorhome parked out there, and then his garage sits back, which will be blocking a lot of the views from the three-story units that are to the north. But there'll be one two-story unit right fronting on Kenmore.
Windows looking to the backyard?
Kenmore Avenue.
Okay.
And the setback for that is the deepest setback in the entire development, so...
Out of curiosity, are they big windows, or would, that will be facing the backyard, or...
No. And in the three-story units, we've raised the window height, so that the bottom of the windows that face that direction are six foot, and I'm a little over 6'1", and if I were standing up against that window, I couldn't see down into his yard, because 6'1" is the top of my head, my eyes are below six foot, and the bottom of that window will be set at six foot, facing that direction, so...
All righty. Okay, let me see.
So just, I'm sorry, while you get your things, so just to understand correctly, unless you're purposely trying to look over someone's, even then would be difficult, right, because it's flat?
It would be impossible.
And your eyesight could only go straight, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmembers have any other questions? If not, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and move for, to adopt Resolution 2015-047, entitled A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Baldwin Park, approving and adopting the mitigated negative declaration of the environmental impact for a zone change to apply the specific plan SB overlay to Assessor Parcel Number 8552-017-004, a specific plan amendment to an existing specified plan for the development of a 51-unit, single-family detached gated condominium project, including the relocation of two wireless communication facilities, and a tentative track map to consolidate 12 lots of, or portions thereof into one lot land for, for a 51-unit detached residential dwelling unit condominium subdivision, and one lot of land for a wireless communication facility within the R1, single-family residential, and MU2, mixed-use, to zone location, Assessor Parcel Number 8552-017-004, 8552-017-068, and so on and so forth. The applicant, KLL Investment LLC, case number Z554 SP. So that is my motion.
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, at this point, we're going to go ahead, we're finished, congratulations, let's get those shovels. Out of curiosity, do we have a date when you're going to demolish that, those current dwellings that are there? Could you come up to the lectern, please? Appreciate that. Because everyone's been asking if there's an actual date.
We're very anxious to get the shovels in there, and we'd love to invite any of the councilmembers that like to come, and when that happens. But it is tied to the actual closing of the property, and now with approval tonight, that'll be moving forward at record speed, I think.
Okay, so you're inviting the council, do you think I could get a tractor and demolish one of them?
Absolutely.
The only reason I'm saying I got to do that, what was that motel where Walmart was at? You guys remember that motel? That, huh? What was the name of it? Huh? Queens Lodge, that's right. Well, I was given the opportunity to get in a tractor, had to get the whole helmet on and drive right up to the wall.
So, so you're an experienced...
I was so happy.
You're an experienced operator.
Yes, all right.
Better, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So, do we get a, can you, keep us apprised of the actual date to demolish?
We will, for sure.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I think, all right, so at this point, we're going to go over to the city council, acting as housing successor agency of the dissolved community development commission, but it's interesting. At this point, we actually met, and I'll move for consent, Callen, which is item one, the consideration of an exclusive negotiation, yes?
I'm sorry, mayor, if I could interrupt, this is the sister report to the previous then, one that was pulled off, so you would want to hold this over with the previous report.
Okay, with the previous, all right, so we're basically going to hold it over to the next meeting. All right, so at this point, we'll make a mo, I'll make a motion that we, give this and bring it, bring it to the next meeting, that's my motion.
I'll second.
Second, any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, we have requests by councilman Ricardo Pacheco for discussion and direction on the following. Councilmember?
Mayor, can I move out to next week? I just need more time to collect more information.
Oh, you want to do it? Okay. All right, so at this point, yes, we're going to go ahead and move it. This point, I'm going to motion to close the city council.
Mayor, I'd like to give direction to staff, if you please.
Sure.
I'd like to give direction to Amy and to Mark Castanola, if you please. I've been asked by several property owners that own some of the vacant buildings that are either on Ramona and throughout Baldwin Park, and I wanted to see if there's some way that we could take a look at that, and still either give them a CUP or something, so that they can rent them out. If the building, of course, is in good condition, I'm not saying something dilapidated, but if Amy and Mark Castanola feel that, that they can be rented, I think we should give that opportunity, or we should consider giving that opportunity to the, to the owner of the property, and that would also bring and generate some revenue for us, instead of having them vacant.
I think that's a great idea.
So, I'll give direction?
Yes. So we can give direction for that, please? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this point, anyone else? Now, we are going to go into closed session, but I'll go ahead and close out the regular city council meeting, that's my motion. And we'll be back out. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to close the city council meeting?
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. Viva Baldwin Park.